I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of April 15th to order. Would you please call the roll?
Zingy?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Bergeron?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Gas?
Here.
Bradbury?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of this land, the Tongas Klinkit people. Under Communications, we have correspondence from the Ketchikan Destination Community Practice and Protocol Work Group. We have some laid on the tables, Lot 3B, which is probably part of the EIDL Advanced Programming for the Small Business Association. There were some questions from Rob Holstrom in regards to the maps and designations. There was some follow-up in Lot 3 to the same issue. We have one from a skin cancer awareness group. They're looking to dress up a statue in every state and union in regards to bringing attention to skin cancer. We have Lot 7B1, which is a withdrawal of new business item 7B1, and Lot 15B3, which is a request withdrawal for Agenda 15B3. Also under Communications at this time, I'd ask Chief Hoag to come up and give us an update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Abner Hoag, Emergency Manager. Happy to be here to give you an update in person tonight on our COVID response and cases in Ketchikan. We did, we've had a trickle of new cases since spring break, but it does appear that vaccinations are helping us to keep those, the spread much lower than it was back in October and November when we had the outbreaks following travel. For school vacation times, we had a lot more outbreaks during that time than what we're seeing this time. So that's very positive news. We did have two new positives announced today. Puts us at nine active cases. One of those cases is close contact and one is under investigation. The case from April 13th was determined to be community spread, and our positivity rate is up to 1.43%. You may recall, a few weeks ago, we updated our thresholds for where we go to different risk levels as a result of our increasing vaccination rates. So just a month or so ago, a 1.43% positivity would have had us at Level 2, and we would have had more mitigation measures in place. But even with these changes, we're still continuing to see very slow amounts of case increase. So that's really good. I think that what we are doing is working right now. We do have currently of the nine cases, six of them are related to two clusters that are taking place currently. They appear to be related to the schools, one in Fawn Mountain and at Ketchikan Charter School. And the school district just put out a release a little bit earlier tonight that both of those schools will be closed tomorrow while they work with public health to make sure they have all of the potential contacts reached and quarantined. And they're going to be offering some extra testing in order to make sure that we have a good control of those outbreaks in those locations. Vaccination rates, as I said, are increasing in the community. At this point, everyone who's living or working in Alaska is eligible to get a vaccination, assuming that the emergency use authorization for the vaccine covers your age group. Currently, the emergency use authorizations that are out there only cover age 16 and older. So age 16 and older can get the Pfizer vaccine currently. Age 18 and older can get the Moderna vaccine. And the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is currently on pause while the CDC investigates a series of six or seven, I think it went up to seven now, rare reactions to the vaccine with a blood clot issue. There have been six deaths, may have gone up to seven. But hopefully that vaccine will be returned to use again soon. They have, they announced today a pause for another week while they continue to look at that and determine whether they're going to reauthorize that. Our vaccine rate for all ages, even the ones who aren't currently eligible to get the vaccine, but our entire population is approximately 43%. When you look at just age 16 plus, we're up to 53%. And you look at our most vulnerable population at 65 plus, and we're up to 86% vaccinated. So Ketchikan is doing very well overall with vaccinations. Almost all of our providers are offering vaccines. If you want a vaccine and you haven't gotten one, check with your primary care physician. They can probably get it for you, or they'll refer you to someone who can. With that, I think that's all that I have for updates tonight unless there's any questions.
Are there any questions for Abner? So, Abner, as we move forward here and we continue with our vaccination plan, do you see a plateau in that? Are there other incentives or programs that we can work to make them more available or maybe to businesses and different things like that in order to get more people vaccinated? Because it's pretty evident that, to me, that the path forward to what we can, hopefully would be something in the realm of normal, is going to be related to the vaccination rate that we have.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think that we have to explore a lot of different options for how we might increase the uptake of the vaccine within the population. A lot of it is educating people on what their concerns are and trying to help inform them and answer their questions. I think there's always going to be some people who just don't want to get vaccinated. And we don't have to get to 100% in order for this to work. As I said, we're already seeing a difference, and we're only to about 50% of our entire population. So we'll continue to chip away at it. We're working with our PIO team to get additional messaging out. More vaccines will become available. More information will be learned about the vaccines that we have, and we'll just continue to chip away at that, and I think that we'll get there. We have seen a slowdown a little bit in the number of people that are taking the vaccine currently, but we have plenty of vaccine available, so I encourage everyone that wants a vaccine, go get one.
So, Abner, if I have questions, if I'm the guy riding the fence, not sure which way I want to go with this thing, who can I call? Where can I get the best information?
The best information probably is going to come from your normal primary care physician, the person that you have a relationship already anyway. They'll be able to answer your questions for you. If you don't have a primary care physician, I know public health, they have, their phone number is published in the directory. You can look them up online. They will answer your call and give you information on the vaccine and try to answer whatever questions you have as well. I believe there's a state hotline number as well. If you can call that vaccine hotline, they'll answer questions for you as well. Thank you. Anybody else? Eric?
You mentioned that we don't need a 100% vaccination rate. What is the number that we are shooting for our community?
At this point, I don't have a magic number that I have in mind. We have come up with changes in our mitigation plan. We make some more changes when we reach 50%, sorry, when we reach, yeah, when we reach 50%, and then some more changes, again, when we reach 70%. When you listen to the medical professionals talk about what herd immunity means and what number we're shooting for, I think you're somewhere in between 70 and 90% range. Not all of those have to come from vaccinations. Some of that percentage can come from people who've been infected and recovered from it. So the approach we're currently taking is to start to make recommendations that allow a little bit more freedom or to allow people to start to get more back to normal. And we're just taking a slow, measured approach so that as we do that, we don't see a huge spike in new cases as we do it. And as long as that works and we continue to get vaccinated, we'll make some more recommendations that reduce those a little bit further.
Thank you. Thanks, Abner.
You're welcome.
Your Honor?
Yes.
This is Riley. Real quick, since we're on the COVID issue, I figure this is a time, it's not so much a question for Abner, but more a statement of concern that I've had two folks reach out to me about, and I figure now's a good time to bring it up, is that great job on all the COVID stuff. One concern I've heard, though, is that on the city of Ketchikan webpage, there's been some posts that say things like, you know, "We must still remember to remain six feet apart," and things like that. And people are a little bit offended of the city making statements like that, you know, and that how it may affect businesses and people in their personal life. So I just wanted to, for the record, mention that. And I don't know who makes those posts on behalf of the city, but it was a concern that was brought up, so I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. And I think that the CDC still says that after vaccination, it is good practice to follow some of the protocols that we had prior to that vaccine, just because not everybody is vaccinated yet and the fact that still 5% of that vaccinated population could become infected. Abner, is that, I guess, as close as I can get to it?
That's pretty close, Mr. Mayor. The most recent recommendations from the CDC for vaccinated individuals, it's still recommended that when you're in a public setting with lots of people who you don't know their risk tolerance level, that you do still continue to wear a mask in those larger public gathering spaces. In small groups with other vaccinated folks, the current recommendation is that you don't need to wear a mask any longer. If you're with folks who you know have a low risk of having a negative outcome, should they become infected and they're not vaccinated, they've also changed the recommendation that it is okay to not wear a mask around those. The problem is, in a public setting, you often don't know who the people are that are around you. And until we've had a little bit longer where the vaccine is available nationwide, I don't think that the CDC will change that recommendation. Although we're in a pretty good place where anybody who wants it can get it, a lot of the country is still not quite there yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Riley. With that, it brings us down to persons to be heard. Madam Clerk, who do we have to speak to us tonight?
We have Ryan McHale.
Good evening, members of the City Council and Mayor Seaberson. I'd like to first acknowledge that we're gathered on the current and ancestral lands of the Tontiquan Klinkit. Before I begin, I'd like to thank you for your time and for listening to me and other members of the community speak. My name is Ryan McHale. I am a queer man, and I'm here to speak about the two incidents of anti-Semitic, racist, and homophobic graffiti in our community. As an ally and as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, a community that is often marginalized, I have a responsibility to speak up when I see other marginalized groups being targeted. In the past few days, I have seen a lack of understanding of the impact that this has on our Jewish, Black, Indigenous, people of color, and LGBTQ+ community members. There are tangible effects from this graffiti, regardless of its intent or the age of those responsible. I would like to offer an approach on how to be better allies to members of our community who have recently been the target of white supremacist graffiti. Listen. This may seem like a no-brainer, but listening is one of the easiest and biggest ways you can be of service to your friends, family, and community members who are being discriminated against. Being an ally is leaning in and listening to the concerns of a marginalized group, not minimizing their fears or rejecting and ignoring their concerns. Listening to these concerns is a form of solidarity. Validate. Just because you have not been the target of this hateful graffiti does not mean that it is not an issue. Similarly, just because you haven't seen problematic, racist, anti-Semitic, or homophobic behavior happening yourself doesn't mean it's not happening in our community. If someone from a marginalized group voices a problem to you, offer your voice to back them up. By dismissing this as just a troubled kid seeking attention or a juvenile act, you ignore the impact that these symbols have on the people being targeted. It has a real effect on our sense of safety and feeling of belonging in Ketchikan. Speak up. It is our responsibility as a community to denounce this and work together to create an environment where these types of actions do not have a space to occur. It is not as simple as pressure washing the paint off a pavement. There is a bigger conversation that is required in our social circles, around the dinner table, in the classroom, at work, and at our places of worship. I challenge you all to listen, validate, and speak up. I want to reaffirm that Jewish, Black, Indigenous, people of color, and queer folk are valued members of our community. You are our neighbors, coworkers, friends, family, and loved ones. You belong here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Arizona Jacobs. I'm a resident of Ketchikan and have been here since 2016. My mom, her name is Angela, and her mom, her name is Deborah, and she is the descendant of two Polish immigrants who fled Poland in 1938 among rising political and social tensions, leaving behind most of their family. We don't really know what really happened to them. There weren't a lot of really well-kept records, but we do know about one. His name was Leon Onderman, and he is Auschwitz-Birkenau prisoner number 21878. He was deported in 1942, and he died in the camps 15 days later. My grandmother is Jewish, and my mother is Jewish, and so I'm Jewish. And I can convert to Christianity, but I'm still a Jew. So, like, I guess, I just want to, like, second what Ryan says, like, pay attention. I have a sincere commitment to this community and its well-being. I want to stay here. I want to build life here. I'm not, I'm not responsible for the death of Jesus, or I don't have horns, and I'm just a normal person who is just trying to do normal things. So mass atrocities, they don't just happen. It's a culmination of a lot of small things that come together to be something big. So pay attention. It's not a casual joke. It's not just a caricature in a newspaper. It's not just a flag in a mall or an article in an obscure magazine or graffiti in a rural town. It matters. For me in high school, my college was once filled with two inches of pennies. So when I would open it up, they would all spill out. And in college, there were metal detectors around my Hillel. I took a temporary contract in Dallas before I moved here, and policemen stand outside my synagogue with guns to protect us. When I first arrived in Ketchikan, I didn't have a place to stay, so I found someone on Airbnb that said that they kept a kosher household because I knew it was safe. And overall, I think I've really felt safe here, but I'm still nervous to list my race or ethnicity or religion on the census, and I'm kind of nervous to out myself here today. So, but I do it anyway, right? Because, like, we can't forget, and we can't forget about prisoner number 21878. So remember and don't forget, because never again means never again. It's, we cannot doubt that something so small will become something much more because it can and it has. I guess I come asking for several things. One would be acknowledgement and denunciation of the acts by all of you publicly against my religion, I guess, and race of persons and other marginalized groups. I want to feel safe here, and I think that might help. I also would love to see the graffiti replaced with something else, something more beautiful and kind. And finally, this is maybe a peculiar request, but if we ever find the person or persons who did it, I request that this person be treated with cavod, with dignity and honor and respect, because it has to be an education issue. And educated about what can happen to their neighbors and just normal people through this kind of thing. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all we have signed up to speak, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Brings us on to the consent agenda. And if there are no objections, I would like to add Item 6A under Unfinished Business, Ordinance 211910, item 1. I would like to add 7A3, 4, 5, and 6. Hearing and seeing no objections, would you, can I have a motion, please?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
It has been moved, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you read the items?
Approval and Minutes, Regular City Council Meeting of April 1st, 2021. Designated Legislative Grant Agreement Number 20CPV-04 between the City of Ketchikan and the Department of Commerce, Community, and Economic Development, Port of Ketchikan Debt Service. A Budget Transfer Professional Services Agreement for Design of Long-Term Care Window Replacement, Welsh Whitley Architects LLC. Declaration of Surplus Vehicles and Equipment. Letter of Support for Ketchikan Gateway Borough Maintenance and Operations of the Northern East Segment of the Rainburg Trail. A Liquor License Renewal for Ketchikan Loyal Order of the Moose Lodge Number 224, DBA Moose Lodge Number 224. Exempting the Procurement of SCADA Networks Security Services from Competitive Bidding Written Quotation Requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Dark Trace Limited. Ordinance Number 211910, Amending and Adding Certain Provisions to the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Charter 205, Entitled Code of Ethics, Second Reading. Exempting the Procurement of Wastewater Division CCTV Camera Van and Associated Equipment from Competitive Bidding Written Quotation Requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Q's Inc. Change Order Number 1, Final to Contract Number 2016, Ketchikan Police Department, Re-Citing, Icing Contractors, Inc. Exempting the Procurement of Ford North Star 167-3 Modular Ambulance from the Competitive Written Quotation Requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Braun Northwest, Inc. And Ordinance Number 211931, Authorizing the City to Enter into a Lease with Options to Purchase for the Acquisition of an Ambulance, Exempting the Lease from Competitive Bidding and Certain Other Procurement Requirements, in First Reading.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. I did have a couple of questions on Item 5A4. I don't know if you want to put that aside, or can I ask a couple of questions now?
Go ahead, go ahead and ask them.
Well, so my, my questions are, due to the financial situation that we're in, it's just kind of always been a little bit of a gripe that I've heard around town, you know, and it may or may not be justified, but basically, you know, jeez, what's the city doing getting rid of so many vehicles every single year when they're still running well, some of them anyway? And I guess just kind of a broad question is, given the financial situation we're in, some of these rigs appear to be well-running. Are we replacing some of these vans and such with new rigs this year? Because if we are, I think that maybe wouldn't be the best thing to do, given the financial situation.
Thank you for your question, Riley. I know that in the past, we surplus property, our vehicles, after they've come to their, end of their useful life. When you talk about police cars, especially a station car, it doesn't take many calendar years to add up the miles on that if it's on the road 24/7. And then some of the other ones are not like a lot of the vehicles in Ketchikan. They succumb to corrosion and rust quite readily, especially if they're street department vehicles that are doing the salting and sanding that we have. So every one of these vehicles has a different history to them, and we try our best to maintain them. So, yeah, they're running, but after a while, the maintenance cost starts to eat you alive, and then it's a matter of also being able to have a reliable vehicle when you get that call out in the middle of the night and go plow snow when you're having problems with engine transmission frames, whatever it may be, electrical issues. So these things aren't just run off by the calendar date. Some of them are extended because they are usable, but there are some point when they just become unusable for the departments. And then it doesn't do us any good to hold on to them in reserves or something because they'll just deteriorate even faster. So the plan is, while they still have some value, to make them available to people in the community that can get some use out of them. And then some of them will just end up for parts and scrap too. So that's my best explanation. Carl, or do you or Mark have any better you can follow up?
Mr. Mayor, I think you've put it very well. The only thing I would add is the vehicles we're surplusing, we're not replacing on a one-on-one basis. So no, we're not going out and buying a new vehicle for every vehicle that we're surplusing.
Hey, Carl. Riley, did that answer your question?
Well, somewhat, Your Honor. I guess my only rebuttal to that would be looking at some of these particular vehicles, not, I understand your point on the police cruiser, but on some of these vehicles, 38,000 miles, 45,000 miles, 37,000 miles, you know, some of these rigs that are outside of that. So I guess I would, I would ask to remove that from the consent agenda, I guess, is what I would like to ask.
For further discussion?
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, looking at this list with the particular vehicles on your, I would like to at least vote no on it, so yes.
So we can move it and have a regular vote on it? That'd be fine.
Thank you.
We will add that to, back to the regular agenda, and we will take it off the consent and go through it. So are there any other questions about the rest of the consent items? Hearing, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bergeron?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes, this brings us back to...
What about me over here?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Bradbury.
We missed one.
We missed you.
Sorry, Abby.
Bradbury?
Yes.
So we put the Item 4, 7A4, back on to regular order business, which is, no, that's not 7A4, it's 5A4, which is in regards to the declaration of surplus vehicles and equipment. So I have a motion for surplus.
Move to approve the surplus of vehicles.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, Dave.
I think we've already discussed it.
Riley, is there anything else you would like to add in regards to the vehicle list?
Yeah, I think I get it. It's just, you know, I understand your point on the police cruisers and some certain vehicles, but when you look through that list, it's quite a few vehicles that appear to be in good shape. And I think, as we say every meeting, you know, this is not the ordinary year, so I'm looking at any way where we can save a few pennies down the road. So that's my take. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Riley.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just a couple of quick comments. I've been fixing equipment in this town since 1985, and I had to make a mental adjustment when I first moved up here. An odometer is about the fourth most accurate indicator of wear and tear in Ketchikan, Alaska. It's virtually meaningless. It's virtually meaningless, and I don't know what the basis is for, they're in good shape or they run good, but without a firsthand inspection, that's just speculation. Thanks.
Thank you. And then a couple of other things, Riley, just to throw in here as I go through this list. We did buy some cheaper vehicles in regards to telephone when we were expanding services and doing more stuff with fiber. And we bought these lightweight vans that were front-wheel drive, and they just didn't, they weren't serviceable. You put 2,000 or 1,000 pounds in the back of them, and they're front-wheel driving, pretty soon you can't drive in the snow, can't get out of gravel driveways. And so they were just the wrong vehicle. And they utilized them to the extent they could, but at some point, they become more of a hazard than they do an asset. So that's just another thing that I can see as we go through these. And then your garbage trucks, when you look at those things, they're on the road seven days a week, carrying very heavy loads, all kinds of weather, and the service life on those goes pretty quick. The garbage is corrosive, you know, road miles, stop, start, big hills, and they, they start to show their wear real quickly. So anyway, that's just some other comments in regards to the stuff that I know about. Yes.
Back in the dark ages when I was on the assembly, I remember one year we actually overrode staff and required them to maintain two vehicles, you could see the, see the road through the floor, because we were worried about spending money. And I guess, you know, I, my default is if staff says there's a problem with this vehicle, it needs to go. There's probably a problem with the vehicle, it probably needs to go.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else? Hearing seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gas?
Now...
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That brings us down to item 7, New Business, A, Update and Implementation of the Ketchikan Public Library 2018-2022 Strategic Plan. Carl, so I imagine that's Pat? Good evening, Pat.
Evening, Mayor Seibertson and members of council. I'm Pat Tully, I'm Director of the Ketchikan Public Library, and I'm here to report on a few of the library's activities in the first quarter of 2021. The library's quarterly report is in your packet, it's also available on the library's website by clicking on About Us and then 2021 First Quarter Report. So back in 2018, we established four goals in our current strategic plan, and the first strategic goal is to make the library a welcoming, beautiful, and inviting place. So earlier this year, Rebecca Jackson conducted a survey of patrons, asking what they would like to see planted in the children's community garden this year. She then used the results of that survey to start seeds that are now growing in the children's library. The seedlings will be planted in the garden in May, and we'll put a call out to families to help tend that garden and eventually harvest it. And our seed library near the main circulation desk has many variety of free, varieties of free vegetables and flower seeds. We welcome people to come in and check out the seed library, and no library account is needed to use it. Our second strategic goal is to serve the Ketchikan community. The library continues to offer online programs such as romps and rhymes, storytime, and baby time. We also have weekly online programs for teens and adults. DIY with Gail features Gail Brooks demonstrating home decorating and craft projects. And most of these online programs are also available on the Ketchikan Public Library's YouTube channel. That channel also includes video versions of the teen advisory group's Next Real Life series of life skills for graduating seniors. And library office manager and teen liaison, Kelly Johnson, is creating brochures with that information from those Next Real Life videos, so that teens can easily carry those with them. Adult, teen, and children's craft and maker bags continue to be really popular. Each bag contains instructions and all the materials to make a project. In addition to the children's maker bags, Amy Tupfer and Anne Marie Marisone have developed two new series of educational bags for kids. STEAM Bags, and STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, have materials for an experiment or a craft with an accompanying Facebook video that provides some context for that experiment or craft. The AHA, or Art History with Amy program, is similar to STEAM. AHA bags have supplies to create a work of art in the style of a famous artist with an accompanying Facebook video about that artist. Our third strategic goal is to engage with the community, and adult services librarian Lisa Pearson organized the Adult Winter Reading Challenge in January and February. We had 117 participants this year, as opposed, as opposed to 50 last year, so that was very popular this year. And this past quarter, outreach librarian Rebecca Brown began a monthly column in the Ketchikan Daily News featuring local residents and their favorite reading. Maria Dudzak and June Dahl were the first two subjects. Rebecca's also creating monthly activity flyers for seniors, and she delivers those flyers and other materials to homebound patrons and local centers that serve seniors. Rebecca also delivers materials to Wish, the Regional Youth Center, and the Car House. Rebecca is a member of the Reentry Coalition to assist people recently released from incarceration. And our fourth and final strategic goal is to make the library a growing, vibrant organization. In February, we conducted our annual inventory of over 76,000 physical items, and we're pleasantly surprised at the low loss rate of .1%, especially given all the changes in procedures and processes that we've had over the past year due to the pandemic. Since August 2020, the library has been at phase two of our reopening, which we've entitled Individual Reading and Study. We have individual tables and chairs out, but so far, no seating for groups. And as I mentioned before, the library's programs and events are either online, there's one on the radio, and there are maker bags that can be taken home and enjoyed. But we are thinking ahead. Our next reopening phase will be a reduction in the amount of quarantining that we do of items and objects that our patrons check out and use in the building. This is in response to recent CDC guidance indicating that COVID rarely is transmitted via surfaces or objects. And with the beautiful spring weather, our children's librarians, Amy Tupfer and Anne Marie Marisone, have scheduled an outdoor storytime next Thursday at 10:30 a.m. at City Park. It will be really great to have an in-person storytime again. And finally, in adult services, Lisa Pearson is putting together two new hiking explorer kits for our patrons who are 16 years old and older. They'll be ready by the end of next week. Each kit will have, be in a waterproof carrier and include supplies and brochures for people who are interested in getting out on Ketchikan's trails this year. And we still loan Ketchikan Volunteer Rescue Squad Spot Locator Beacons, and no library account is needed to borrow those. So that's my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Pat. Does anybody have any questions? I think you covered it pretty well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that brings us up to item 7A2, Budget Transfer Approving Professional Service Agreement for Lobbying Services Between the City of Ketchikan and Robertson, Mongol, and Eustah, I guess. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm with the city council, approve the professional services agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Robertson, Monigal, Eustah, for the federal lobbying service, services, authorize a budget transfer of $40,500 from appropriated reserves of the general fund to the mayor and council's 2021 management and consulting services account, number 640.04, and direct the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city council.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, Judy.
I have nothing to add, Your Honor. We discussed this before, and I think it's a good move.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hearing seeing none, would you please call the rule?
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item 7A7, Discussion of Opening Birth Free Restrooms for the 2021 Visitor's Season and Funding, Associated Port Security Staff, Council Member Gas.
Oh.
Riley, do you have anything?
Yeah, you know, we kind of discussed it last week, but I just think, at the end of the day, we got to find places to make some serious cuts, because we're all seeing that we're not going to have a 50% cruise season, and I know the countervailing point would be that this is coming from the port fund, but obviously, we know the port fund is in dire straits as well, so I just think it would, I just can't convince myself that spending that kind of money to have a couple of folks monitor a restroom would be worth it. And I think, you know, I heard a lot of people voice basically something similar to what I said. I did have one couple tell me they really would like to see it open. I know, speaking with Judy, and it sounds like Tyler Reynolds can rent us one for that period of time, can rent us an outhouse with like 4,000 bucks. That's a savings of 71,000 to use an outhouse rather than the bathroom, so that's kind of my take. I just think we got to make some uncomfortable cuts, and this would be one of them.
Thank you, Riley. Judy?
Yes, just to clarify that, that was the honorable mayor's work that got us the number on Tyler. But sometimes I think it's okay to just say no. I think $75,000 is too much. If there's another alternative, I like the Tyler alternative very much, and that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I wanted to agree with Riley and Judy on that one, particularly in light of finding out that the Visitors Bureau building will be open too a large portion of the time, so I'm not sure we need to be spending $75,000 no matter where it's coming from to keep, you know, and yeah, I walk by, by there almost every day, and I see people do use it, but they could also use berth two, but I think what the information the mayor came up with is, is probably a good option too as well in terms of being able to put, you know, porta-potties where they could be useful. And then they would be also responsible for dealing with them as opposed to, as opposed to staff as well, so I think that's a, you know. In a perfect world, we'd open up berth three, but I think we don't really have the money at this point, and I don't think we need, I don't think we need to open it up.
Thank you. Abby?
So just to reiterate a few things that Dave said, I definitely, like Dave said, if it was a different circumstance, yes, go for it, but we are needing money, Port Enterprise, especially because we do have debt services that we have to pay no matter what. We can't push the can down the road for that. The second thing is, the KVB is open during normal business hours. I understand a lot of people walk at night. There's also restaurants open, there's bars, there's plenty of places that you can pop into with or without a dog to go to the restroom on that strip down there. And I, I know a lot of people talked to me about how I could, you know, give up these jobs when it's high school students or people who don't otherwise have work, but like I said last meeting, we need to preserve the people we currently have that are going to help us reopen. And there are other jobs in the community for high schoolers or people that are looking for seasonal work to go and get jobs at, so I encourage them to do that, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Emily?
Yeah, I think when I read the fact that the Visitors Bureau was open, and, you know, I don't see spending that kind of money when I pretty much could go pop into practically four different businesses along that way and use the bathroom, and nobody's going to throw me out for it. I mean, unless, maybe they will tonight. But...
Thank you. So I did, and all I did was trying to figure out options. And again, where some of those businesses might welcome that, some of them probably don't want to be the, the stop for everybody. But the portable bathroom issue, there's a contractor in town that rents those out, and so I asked for some pricing. And one of the cans would be an ADA can to meet that requirement, and then the other one would be a standard standing can with a sink in it. And the monthly rent for the two of them together was $700. And that comes with one service a week. And for an extra service, so you could get a service twice a week, it was $107 for the ADA one, and 6750 or 175 total. So on a monthly basis, you could spend $875 to have them serviced twice a week. And I know they're not ideal, and there's a consideration for vandalism and all the other things that go along with that. So if we were to put them down there for five months, we could do it for $4,375. But I think that you would have to make sure that they would be secured, so you, they wouldn't be pushed around, thrown over, whatever, tipped over, that kind of stuff. And then I thought that it would be interesting if we had a camera on the outside area to help deter some of that vandalism, but also give us an opportunity to see how much they're used. I think that would be useful data, information for us. And then I thought a little bit about, you know, where's the placement for these things? And I, to me, the ideal space would be down where berth one and berth two come together. It's away from the main downtown area. If we do have small cruise ships, berth three would still be opened up. It would be a distance from the Visitors Bureau, but the people that are walking, they would know they were there and be a part of that. And then, of course, it's the manning, who's going to lock them and unlock them, because that's going to have to happen. And that would be up to management to, I think, kind of figure some of that stuff out. I know we have a night crew on that can maybe open it early in the morning, and then at some point, the ports and harbors will be going to, I think, two shifts a day and a swing shift, and maybe there would be an opportunity to do that. I don't know exactly all the ins and outs of that, but again, I just throw that out there as an option. It might not be the ideal situation, but we'd be still providing some bathrooms for those people that have requested them, and at much less cost. So that's all I kind of had with that. So is there anybody else that, anyway, I just want to go with this thing? Yes.
Your Honor, I would like to move for us to not open the berth three restrooms for the 2021 visitor's season. I guess I'll throw that motion out there.
All right.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we don't open the berth three. Of course, with that, if we have a ship in, under normal circumstances, we would open it, correct? Carl, that would...
Do we have contingency for that?
Right.
Do I need to amend that motion then for that? No?
Outside of regular service?
Yes, so I amend the motion to say we are not opening berth three restrooms for 2021's visitor's season outside of the normal circumstances.
All right.
Right?
I think we got the drift of that. And second's okay with that, right? So anybody else for that? Any discussion? Hearing seeing none, please call the rule.
Gas?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Aye.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your Honor, we have a second motion to, uh, encourage looking into the porta-potties?
Sure, that would be appropriate.
I, I saw movement.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? So I, for me, um, you know, there's going to be some issues with how we're going to fast them down and the potential for the camera, and right now, we got, uh, just the rental and service on them for $4,300, um, for five months, so I, I would like to see us put a, what do you think, Carl? $10,000 would probably cover all the associated costs?
It should, Mr. Mayor. If it doesn't, we'll come back and let the council know.
All right.
Your Honor?
Yes.
How many, so how many is that?
There will be two.
Two, okay.
And, and one's ADA, and one is just a standard can with a sink in it, right?
Okay, they have them that are ADA?
Yeah, they do have ADA ones.
Wow, I've never seen one. I guess I gotta go check it out.
Yeah, so, um, and then I, I ask that maybe we make a, allocate at least $10,000, because there's going to be some camera stuff and other things that may have to go on with those, and, and then, of course, uh, padlocks and whatever else we may need to do that with, and, and I think that we should leave it up to the staff to actually figure out where the best placement is and, and that kind of stuff. So we have a motion, so, um, any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, please call the roll.
Flora?
No.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that passes, five to two.
Thank you very much. Um, brings us on to item eight, uh, uh, ongoing review and discussion of cruise-related issues, uh, put on the, um, agenda by Councilmember Bergeron. So do we have anything in regards to, um, our latest information in regards to cruise-related issues? I think one of the things that we've seen is, uh, Senator Sullivan has introduced a bill in regards to the Passenger Service Vessel Act, um, and repealing that or waiving it for the period of time, and Representative Young is going to introduce a similar bill in the House and try to put a committee together to determine the protocols for returning to sale rather than, uh, the stuff that the CDC is doing, um, at this particular point in time. Also, um, today, we had, um, a conversation with CLIA, with representatives from some of the other cruise lines, and it was just a follow-up on our, uh, last meeting and the discussion with the council in regards to coming up with, um, the projects, uh, the funding issues and all the other things associated where we want the ports to get to in the next 10 years and the partnerships that we have available, uh, through the CLIA and cruise lines and stuff, and I thought it was a very productive meeting today. Um, neither side, the city nor the, um, cruise line, uh, agency has, um, a compiled list yet, and, uh, CLIA has to talk with its principals and different lines to see what their needs and requirements are, and, and the city still has to discuss with the council, uh, the plan in regards to what the city's needs are. Um, but again, I think the general, uh, drift of the conversations was very positive, looking forward to, um, developing that partnership to where we can move forward, understanding that, uh, probably 90, 95% of the issues are pretty, pretty straightforward, and we're still going to have that small percentage that we're going to have to figure out how to reach agreement on, uh, whether it be on the city side or the cruise side, and then as we get through that, there'll be some questions about financing, how we fund that, how quick the cruise industry returns, gets their bills paid off, how quick the city returns and gets their reserves built back up, uh, but again, I think that, uh, it's, uh, resetting the conversation, and I think it's more positive than I've had in, in quite a, quite a while, so I think, uh, that we're going to, um, come back together after we have our meeting, the city does, uh, in regards to, um, those issues, and under, um, future agenda items, I'll be proposing, um, a special meeting to, to discuss those items. Um, but that's where, that's the latest news that I have in regards to what's going on with the cruise industry. Carl, do you have anything to add to that?
I think you summarized it very well, Mr. Mayor. Um, what we're working on is, at least at this point, staff's perspective of the issues that are out there that will have to be discussed by both sides, um, not proposing anything specifically, but just getting everything out on the table, and that's what we're going to want the council to weigh in on before we present it to CLIA, so that's what we're hoping to bring back.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else?
I have one question, or, yeah, question, I guess.
Sure.
Um, so I know we've had a lot of talk about how to restart 2021. Um, have we started having conversations on what 2022 is going to look like? I know, um, just through the other industry members, I'm hearing, you know, blocked off area for cruise ship gas, um, just into 2022 until this is kind of, I don't want to say blows under the rug, but kind of moves down the road a little bit. Have we started kind of planning how the city is going to reopen in 2022 to vessels, or is that kind of on the sideburner?
Well, Abby, I think that's going to be an ongoing conversations based on if there's other strains that come through, how the cruise ships are going to adapt to it, um, if there's new players coming to Alaska, uh, through all this process, and what slots they're going to fix, fit into, so, um, I think it's a, uh, one of those conversations, um, in regards to 22 that, uh, neither the cruise line or, or the cities or any of the port communities have a definitive answer, because we still haven't got anything going in 2021.
Yeah, I understand there's no definitive answer, obviously.
Yeah.
Being in the industry, we have Plan A through Z for every year, for the next three years, and so I just didn't know if we had any kind of rough ideas, if this was still, if we were to open today, what would that look like? Should we not, you know, can we make that happen in 2022 if it's required? I just didn't know if there was kind of planning down the road versus planning for a season that unfortunately probably won't.
Yeah, and, and I think the cruise ships are going to, and CLIA will help us with that conversation in regards to, if we get a season of 800,000 people, what's that look like for the community and what's that look like for the cruise industries and everybody involved, so, um, those are conversations I hope we will be having as we move forward, and that's just for the ports of Ketchikan, not counting what we have in Ward Cove, so.
Yeah, of course, that's, we need to start, start with ours first and then figure out how to take care of the rest.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I just had a message from someone, I'm sure, who's saying, you all, we all have microphones speaking to them.
Thank you.
Apparently, the virtual world is not hearing us, so we're there.
All right, so, um, it brings us to item nine, the ongoing review and discussion of the State of Alaska COVID-19 health mandate. We did have an update from ABNIR, uh, earlier on in the meeting. Is there anything that anybody wishes to add at this time?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a question for, I guess it would be for Carl, and I've had a few people ask me, and I don't know what the answer is. How long are we planning to require, uh, city employees to wear masks while working?
Councilmember Gas, we're putting out revised, uh, direction to employees tomorrow based on the latest CDC guidance. Uh, we're offering relaxation of some of the protocols based on employees who've been vaccinated, and if employees are vaccinated, we're going to try to give them as some margin relative to the protocols we've had in place. Uh, groups of four who have been vaccinated will not have to wear a mask. Uh, employees who've been vaccinated and are in city vehicles won't have to wear a mask while they're in, in vehicles. If there's interaction with the public, uh, masks are still going to be required for the time being. Lacey, you want to add anything?
Uh, Councilmember Gas, Carl pretty much captured it. We're now, uh, responding to CDC guidance and also the guidance that the EOC put out, and are offering, um, some relaxed protocols in the workplace environment for those that have been fully vaccinated.
Thank you. To answer your question?
Thank you.
Riley?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing seeing none, brings us down to item B, Ketchikan Public Utilities. Uh, item one was, was pulled, brings us to item two, ordinance number 211929, approve a site use agreement between Vertical Bridge S3 Assets LLC and the City of Ketchikan DBA Ketchikan Public Utilities, first reading. Do I have a motion?
Is that seven B one? Two.
Two.
I was on the wrong one. Sorry. Okay. I recommend the city move, I move the City Council in first reading ordinance number 21-1929, approving a site use agreement between Vertical Bridge S3 Assess Assets LLC and City of Ketchikan DBA Ketchikan Public Utilities, provided, providing for the filing of referendum petitions and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
I don't have anything.
Everybody understand what we're doing here in regards to this, this agreement? All right, good. Um, hearing and seeing no questions, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Yeah, passes, thank you very much. Brings us to item eight, approval of vouchers. Approval of vouchers, Barnessa's Books for $12.99 and All American Auto for $601.29.
Your Honor, I move for the approval of vouchers to Barnessa's Books in the amount of $12.99 and to All American Auto in the amount of $601.29.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We weren't selling Mark books to work on cars, were we?
No, but you hired my wife.
Dave, I told you not to tell anybody.
Charlotte didn't oil change, so we're good.
All right, any, any questions? Hearing seeing none, please call the roll.
Gas?
Yes.
Kifer?
Abstain.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Flora?
Abstain.
Bergeron?
Aye.
That motion passes. Bring this to the manager report. Carl, what do you have for tonight?
Just have two. Mr. Mayor, um, we included in our, on agenda, a report that, uh, the Borough and Southeast Conference are going to be sponsoring a Economic Development Forum on April 26. We will be represented by several departments. If, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, and council members wish to participate, uh, you need to let the clerk know, uh, so in case we have to notice it as a meeting.
And what was the date on that again, Carl?
April 26.
Okay.
And the only other one I have with your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, the Assistant City Manager would like to talk to you about bananas, so.
Thank you. Uh, yesterday, I received a call from a gentleman who is spearheading a national marketing campaign, uh, for National Skin Care Awareness Month, which is in May. Uh, part of that campaign is on May 1st to select one sculpture, public sculpture, in each U.S. state, and dawn that, uh, human sculpture with a banana suit, um, life-size banana suit. Um, the reason for that is, the campaign slogan is, "We are not bananas," um, meaning that we don't have that extra layer of protection as humans against the sun, and we need to take precautionary measures like wear sunscreen. Uh, this gentleman was approaching the city because he wanted to see if he could have use of one of the figures on the rock sculpture, uh, down on berth two, to put a banana suit on it for just one day as part of this marketing campaign. Um, it would just be for an eight-hour day. They would have, um, a representative on hand that would provide further information on skin cancer awareness, uh, answer any questions. Um, originally, the gentleman wanted to use an ice sculpture that was an anchorage, but it will probably be melted by the time this campaign goes into action on May 1st, so he was looking at alternatives and was really intrigued by the rock. I spoke with the artist, Dave Rubin, uh, today about it, and also yesterday. Um, he, um, is supportive of, of the efforts of this marketing campaign. Um, I think on some level, he was probably honored that his piece was being considered for a national campaign and would be essentially the, the, the sculpture for the State of Alaska, along with other sculptures throughout the country, um, such as Dolly Parton, uh, Teddy Roosevelt, uh, Kelly Slater, all these different, um, well-known individuals from America's, uh, history and present for that matter. Um, so he, he, Dave Rubin is supportive of it. Um, I spoke with the Arts Council. They also thought it was an intriguing idea and would, um, support it any way that they could, but tonight, um, I wanted to check in with the City Council to see what your thoughts were, because surely, uh, this may raise a few eyebrows in the community if people are walking along the port and come across the rock with one of the figures, um, with a banana suit on, which, by the way, um, the figure that we had identified as maybe being the best candidate for this marketing campaign would be the fisherman, um, as opposed to some of the other, uh, figures on the sculpture, so, um, I can answer any questions, but ultimately, we are asking for the City Council's, um, guidance on if this is something that you would be supportive of for the single day on May 1st.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be, make more sense if the Assistant City Manager wore the banana suit?
Statue, Councilmember Flora, statue.
You could, you could hold a position pretty well.
Dave?
Uh, yeah, initially, my thought was, I, I glanced over and thought, wait, how long's this going to be up? And I, I imagined a banana suit hanging out there for like weeks, and you've talked to Dave, and, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Yes.
If Dave says yes, I'm in. And I mean Rubin, not, not.
So, Lacey, I think you answered my question, because there were some concerns about the use of the statue in certain situations, and one of those was that we'd have to go back to the artist who has the, and so, uh, if you guys can reach agreement with him, um, if there's four hands from the council, I think that we should just go ahead and move forward and leave it in your capable hands and make sure it's done appropriately. So you do have four hands, so, thank you for that.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, City Clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney? Future agenda items. I would like to schedule a special meeting for April 29th to talk about the discussions in regards to infrastructure, uh, related to our CLIA discussions, a partnership discussion is, I guess, is what it is.
Does it have to be that particular day, Your Honor?
Uh, that's probably the best, uh, for, I'll be returning to town on the 28th. I'll be out of town before, you know, before that, so. Is there, uh, is there a better time for you on that particular date?
The evening's bad, but I'll, I'll.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor, did you say April or May?
We're doing April, Carl?
That's what we discussed earlier today.
Okay, April 29.
Yep.
Your Honor? Oh.
And I would assume that would be holding it here?
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Janley?
So that would be for, just going over the?
The presentation that Carl is putting together that we'll be working with CLIA on, and so we need city council input in regards to crafting that and approval as we move forward.
Your Honor, can we start the meeting at six?
We start the meeting at six, it's a special meeting, we can, yes.
Is that going to be difficult, the council?
It's all difficult.
Six is bad, too.
Six is bad.
Six is bad, seven's bad.
I can try my hardest to make it here.
Okay, good, good. So.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. So.
Is it, I wouldn't call it an agenda item, but I'd like to keep abreast of the hate graffiti issues that we're having. So could we maybe make it just a, like a, an update on the graffiti issues we've been having in the community? I don't know if that's an agenda item, but.
You want a management report?
Yeah, like, yeah, just.
Discussion item?
Yeah.
Okay, we can put it on the next regular council meeting, that'd be fine? Okay. At the request, we'll go ahead and put that on as a discussion item. And I think that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Speaking of that topic, is it possible to get an update from, like, the police department? I know they put out four sub-tips, kind of where they're at. Is this even something that we're going, like, going to find who it is, or like, I just didn't know if we could get?
And I don't know what the answer is to that either, Abby, what their investigation is at this particular point in time in regards to the graffiti, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just in terms of that.
And so if it's an ongoing investigation, they probably don't have much to release.
And are we working with the troopers since the second one happened outside city limits?
We could ask.
Okay.
Thank you. So that brings us down to mayor and council comments. We'll start with Sam, what do you have for us tonight?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to say that I was deeply disturbed to see in the news that we have the type of graffiti that we've spoken about tonight at the table and from the folks and the general public. I am mortified, ashamed of, of, you know, not really ashamed, but I'm really saddened by this. And I know that it deeply affects a lot of people in our town, and it affected me. And I hope that we find the people that are responsible for this, and I hope that we can put an end to it. And I just wanted to say that if anybody is out there listening, that this is not the majority of Ketchikan, this is like a very small segment of some bad characters in town. And I just wanted to express my concern, and that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. We like to think that things change in Ketchikan over time. I can certainly remember when I was growing up here, quite a few instances, at least certainly more than, more than one or two, of similar graffiti being put out there. And you would hope that, you know, 30 or 40, or however many years it was, later, we'd be beyond that. But we aren't. And that's sad, one of the sad facts about, about life in general. We have, this is not even, you know, we, people, I, I, I frequently, I've seen a lot of swastikas down around the old library area and that, I mean, it happens. And what, what bothers me is that I don't think people in general take it as seriously as they should. I remember several instances when I was growing up, and it was almost always young kids doing it, and it was kind of taken, oh, well, it's just kids being kids. Well, at some point, as a community, we have to get beyond that. And frankly, when kids are doing it, they're not being raised appropriately, I guess, is about the nicest way I can put that. And I guess the other factor, too, I wanted to toss out there, because, is that I know people out there know who did this. You know, kids are very bad at keeping secrets. And I know probably someone listening to us talk tonight knows who did it. And it's time to step up and say, okay, this is not okay. We know who did this. We're going to do what we can to make sure it doesn't happen again as much as we possibly can. But we need, as a community, to step forward and say, it's not just youthful discretion or, or someone in a drunken stupor being an idiot, particularly when they're running around on the roads and, you know, marking up roads and marking other things, too. So I think, I think we just need to step up, all of us, and say, it's not right, and we're going to do what we can to prevent it in the future.
Thank you, Dave. Riley?
Yeah, I don't really have nothing much to say, other than I agree with Dave and Sam, that was really gross stuff, and I hope it gets put to a stop real soon because that doesn't represent the 99.99% of people in Ketchikan, so hopefully they put the kibosh on it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Riley. Mark?
I think the speaker who said that if and when the people that did this are identified, that we treat them with patience and respect and make this a moment of education because if they can't learn from this, then we're just bound to repeat this for another 30 or 40 years. That's all I got, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mark. Abby?
I think everybody's pretty much said what I wanted to say, but I definitely do not condone, condone this behavior. I was sickened to hear about it while I was away, that our little town can still have that much hatred in it. I just don't understand. And I want to extend a huge apology to anybody who was affected by that because that doesn't represent the majority of this community. We do love you, we encourage you to stay here, and we are here to support you. On the other hand, I do encourage anybody who does know somebody who did this or participated in this or even supported this to please talk to the police department. We do need to, you know, talk to these people and start, like Mark said, education on how to change this for the future generations.
Thank you, Abby. Janley?
Yeah, growing up here, it's fascinating because we, we tend to say we're not, this isn't what we are or who we are. Unfortunately, history doesn't always agree. We've always had that underlying tension of racism and discrimination and the inability to be accepting of others because of differences. It's very disturbing to see it on a trail, a trail that has a history all in its own, that most people have no clue the damage that that trail did to people, young girls, people I grew up with. And I, I don't necess, I agree with, with Kadom. The Jewish tradition is that you teach through love, and I think that although it would be nice to catch the person who did this, I think it would be nice, a better tool, to consider a community education piece, whereas maybe, and we can't tell the school what to do, but I would challenge the entire community to join, do something creative in a way that is educational but also encourages inclusion, so that people of all, you know, walks of life feel included. I, you know, I, I went to college in LA, I saw a lot of things I didn't ever want to see. I always used to think Ketchikan was not like that, but I bartended in Ketchikan, so I know it's not perfect. When I had my accident, I went to the burn ward in Seattle, and the majority of my roommates were in there and were burned because of race hate crimes. Children who were burned because, that was 1995. So in order to make a change, we're taught not to talk about race and all these things and try to just, you know, shuffle. But I think it's time we have these conversations, and I think they're extremely important because no one, everyone's born free, everybody's born with rights. Whether or not we allow them to feel free and benefit from those rights is up to all of us as a community. And as a lifelong community member, that would be my ultimate goal. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Judy?
I agree with everything everyone has said. It was terribly offensive. I do want to thank the city crews, though, who went out there and cleaned that up pretty quickly, and the police department. I have faith in their ongoing investigation. And just, Councilman Kifer's right, somebody knows something out there. Step up and make the call, and we really need to get to the end of this. I'm sure there's more to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Truly an unfortunate situation in our community. I've heard the conversation tonight, and a lot of times, kids have been mentioned, and it may or may not be kids. A lot of the kids I know would, would never do something like this, and they'd be appalled with the fact that somebody, they have a lot of pride in their community. But somebody did this, and, you know, it's not always about catching them or punishing them, and I appreciate the conversation tonight with the two speakers that we had. It's a social issue, and as I think everybody has heard from this council, it's one that, that we're concerned about. And we have compassion for those people that were targeted. So again, city crew, and I think it was a joint, the Borough got out and did some stuff also, is that correct, Carl? It was city and Borough?
It was a combined effort, Your Honor.
So I certainly appreciate that, to their quick response. And I'd like to thank them for that. So with the votes that we have, there's no need for any executive sessions, is that, is that correct, Carl?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So if there's no other new business, I think I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Did we actually get out of here before 10?
Yeah. Good night, everybody.